To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Motion to declare an open meeting. So, you think? Second to declare an open meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Notification, the Open Meetings Act is posted on the door in the back of the room. Five roll call chants.
Yes.
Kate.
Yep.
Wyatt.
Here.
Self here, Justin.
Present.
Melissa. Number six, approve the agenda for tonight. Changes I don't believe.
No adjustments.
Motion to do that.
All.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, second that. Move the second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. We'll move on to consent agenda number seven, starting with the minutes from last month, two meetings. Flip those over. See if there's any things to be changed. Questions on the minutes, we move on to the financials.
The Pierce property tax figures came in after packets went out on Thursday, so I did include an updated property tax revenue in your folder. So, March is usually a, or I'm sorry, April's usually a little thin, May is healthy. So, general fund is sitting just in really good shape right now. We're gonna get a nice set of numbers next month, so we're real healthy heading into summer.
It's like we're doing pretty good on the budgets too for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so far, so good. And just a little update on the Booster Club repayment of the motor coach expense. They have until January one coming up. Their balance is $6,750. So, they made another payment, so that'll be taken care of, you know, in the coming weeks or months, certainly before next full year starts. So, that'll be, that transaction will be done.
Is it January one?
January one. Twenty-six, January one. $6,750.
Nutrition fund gonna maybe need a little more.
Little infusion, yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
Kelly's watching, including.
I'm gonna have to actually hang on to a claim until I get the, the state's refund for the claim that I submit the first of the month, unless we decide to transfer more money. But I did the payroll number today, and we're gonna need about forty-five hundred, so.
Had a little chat with regional superintendents, you know, we, we bounce a whole lot of basic questions back and forth on everything imaginable. One of them threw in something like, hey, how's everybody's school nutrition fund looking? Everybody must've thought it was just them. And within, you know, twenty minutes, there were a dozen superintendents, you know, that essentially acknowledged the same thing, you know, since the, you know, the, the funds for the pandemic, you know, the federal funds for the pandemic ran out, you know, everybody's now, you know, finding just about the same, same set of circumstances. So, just supplementing subsidizing with general fund dollars more than we had to since pre-pandemic.
Any other questions on financials? Not when you look at the claims.
Your claims do show a fifty thousand dollar subsidy to activities. And there'll likely be another sizable transfer from general fund before the end of fiscal.
So, flag pole down, is it a football field?
That's a flag pole for out here, and that expense has been covered by Terry Young family, class of fifty-nine. So, we, we received that, a check for that precise amount, correct Kelly?
Yes, we did.
So, that'll be installed sometime this summer. We may not be able to put it right back where it is in that concrete. It might move over just slightly to the west in that little grassy area. But it'll be just like the Ray Door pole at the track.
Are there any other questions, any complaints?
Oh, okay, I, I will mention. I, I guess I, I could say at this time, I'm actually at an eighteen, you know, a, a potential hundred thousand dollar investment. This may be the time for maybe some of that discussion, I guess I could, I could weigh. I, I recommend.
Yeah, we got it in front of us right now.
Yeah, we, we, you, you can afford that right now if you, if you'd like. I, I would recommend, if we wanna get back to a million, we're at seven hundred thousand in CDs, if we wanna get back to a million, I'd recommend let that, the next three hundred thousand be flex CDs, lower interest rate, but you, you can, you can go money in and money out of them without penalty. So, they're more, they're more flexible. So, you know, we found ourselves a few years ago needing to borrow against those million, none of those were flex. So, it just gives you and future boards an opportunity to access those funds. So, it'd be a three eight, three point eight percent currently for a hundred thousand dollar flex. That's at Midwest. Conversely, their five-month regular is four point one five. So, you know, it's, it, it, it's a middle amount, minimal probably amount of interest, you know, honestly, but it gives you, again, just easier access to it should you or a future board maybe need those funds, so.
What's the term on that?
Well, that, that I don't have. I, I just wrote down the other one, that five eleven, twenty-one month. And I don't, I don't know that.
I didn't know how often.
Yeah.
It would change, or.
Yeah.
If it's a longer term one fixed at that.
Yeah, yeah. We can, I, I can find that out for you in the morning, if you need to, if you prefer to have that information before you invest that.
Just curious? None of the other ones are flexed.
Correct. So, a five month is four point one five, eleven month is four point oh five, and twenty-one month is four point oh. We're four point oh five on our new rate from Midwest, and the flex is three eight.
Now, the other banks offer a.
They're not as high.
A flex or whatever?
They're not as high. I checked all three of them, that's the highest rate between Brunswick, Madison, and Midwest. So, we do have funds with each, I figured we'd wanna go with the best rate we could get right now. And Midwest has those.
Get to that.
Okay.
Discussions are back a bit later then. Other questions, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, second that. Move the second to accept the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those no. Motion to carry. Number eight, celebration of excellence, we got the seniors here to talk about work-based learning experience.
Okay. I've been job shadowing at. I'm Bailey Britt. I've been job shadowing at Fountain Point Medical and Radiology Center in Oxford, Nebraska on my Fridays. Job shadowing at Fountain Point has been a very valuable experience as I look towards studying radiology in college. By observing professionals, I've gained a firsthand understanding of the daily routines, technical skills, and patient interactions that define in this field. This experience has helped me better understand what I learned in the classroom and the practical realities of medical environment, allowing me to make more informed decisions about my career path. One of the most significant benefits has been the opportunity to witness the implications of this knowledge in the real world scenarios. Seeing how radiologists and technicians use imaging technologies to diagnose and treat patients has piqued my interest even more in this field. The chance to ask questions and receive guidance from experienced professionals has deepened my understanding of the complexities and difficulties of radiology. The exposure of various imaging machines such as MRI, CT scans, and X-rays have been particularly interesting. I've learned a lot about the specific uses of each machine and the importance of image quality and placements in accurate diagnoses. This hands-on experience has sparked my curiosity to dive deeper into the physics and technology behind medical imaging, which I believe will be crucial for my success in radiology. This job shadowing, shadowing opportunity also has provided me with network opportunities and mentorship possibilities. I've connected with radiologists, technicians, and other healthcare professionals, building relationships that could lead to future internships or job opportunities. This exposure to state-of-the-art equipment, equipment, and diverse imaging techniques has enhanced my understanding of the technological advances in radiology, preparing me for the challenges and innovation I'll encounter in my academic and professional career. Overall, my time at Fountain Point Medical Imaging Center has reinforced my passion for radiology and equipped me with a practical understanding of the field. This experience has not only prepared me for the academic challenges of college, but also inspired me to pursue a career where I can make a meaningful impact on patient care throughout medical inter. I thank all you guys for letting us seniors come and do these Fridays, because it definitely has helped me a lot understand more about radiology before I even get into college to learn about it. I think you will do great with that. Thank you.
For probably those that don't know me, my name is Isaac Carter, and for the past few months, I've been job shadowing at Huskridge LLC. Over the past two months there, I've job shadowed many different parts of how the plant works. Well, and I, I should also say, I've also been job shadowing Sand Hills Energy in Atkinson, as well as, in Ames, Iowa, there's another plant that I've also job shadowed. I've learned a lot about how the ethanol industry works, from just how the ethanol's made, to how it's, to how it's sold, and then distributed. I followed my dad around a lot, who's Seth Harder, who's the CEO at Huskridge, and I've also followed Bill Stefan, who is the Vice President of Operations at Huskridge quite a bit, and they've shown me the ins and outs of a lot of the daily operations there. I also have, follow around Jeff Goode's, who is the Safety Manager there, and he, actually the first day, took me around and showed me everything that's, how to do it right. How to measure your emissions in the stacks, you know, the big steam stacks, what's coming out of those, how to wear PPE, and just be safe on the job site, so that'll help me in the future quite a bit, just, you know, not getting myself hurt on a job site. With following my dad, he's shown me a lot of the politics behind ethanol, a lot of the politics behind running a multimillion dollar company, and everything in his day-to-day life, such as power consumption, and dealing with the power companies, to even water and natural gas. And then Bill has shown me a lot about how to get permits to do certain work on the plant, as if you've driven by there lately, you've probably seen the big building, they're putting it up on the west side of the plant, that's where they're putting in their new turbine. It's a lot of paperwork that goes into that, because it's such a big project. And he's shown me a lot of the way through that. And then I've also followed around their chemical engineering, which is what I'm hoping to go into, I'm going to study next year at first Northeast, and then UNL for chemical engineering, and I'm hoping to get a specialization in biofuels, specifically ethanol and biodiesel. And following Adam, that's his first name, I can't remember his last name right now, following him around, I learned quite a bit, just what he does at the core, and it's a lot, it's a lot different from what I had in mind, actually. He does a lot more paperwork, and does a lot more calcula, a lot more calculations than I would've thought, such as with that Steve Turbin, and how to make the plant more efficient. It's been very beneficial for me, and it's a great way to get out of school on Fridays, and just go do what I wanna do, so.
Appreciate you, man.
It's been really great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once again, for those who don't know me, I'm Harrison Thor. I've been spending my work-based learning Fridays at ER at Faith Regional. I've been following around Dr. Dilly. With the ER, you never really know what's gonna come through those doors, it could be anything from a cough to somebody having severe trauma from an accident or an injury at home. Really what comes through depends on the weather most of the time, surprisingly, but that is the truth. Ironically, it's actually quite simple. I mean, you just go from room to room, and you take your notes on the computer, take tallies on every patient, make sure you have a tab for each one, make sure you write everything down, so if anything ever comes back to bite ya, you have a record on everything you've done. It's really helping get a good understanding of like how to handle yourself in such a high-pressure place like that, but also be calm at the same time. How to handle patients, make them feel good while giving them the truth, and you know, not want to scare them about anything. I hope to get a bachelor's in pre-med at UNL the next four years, and then hopefully get into UNMC, and then become a family practitioner, and then maybe do ERs on the weekends, something like that, which is what Dr. Dilly does. But no, he's, he's helped me learn a lot. It's nice to know that a person my age can go in there, and like if I just really focus, I can understand it. But no, it's a, it's a good experience, I mean, everyone there is really helpful. It's definitely kind of an odd deal, never being in there and working it instead of being the patient, but no, I really enjoy it, and I've learned a lot, so that's what I do on Fridays.
Very good.
Thank you.
My name is Corbin Kement, and I've been spending the last couple months for my Fridays at Demerck Farms. You know, I chose to work out there because I've been working out there for the last couple summers, and I plan to go on to animal science, so working with dairy cows and just on a farm in general will definitely help me with that. Some of the things I do out there, really just depends on the day and what Bill, the owner, wants to do. I usually start with our normal chores, which includes like calibrating the robots, or scraping stalls and breaking those out, and then feeding the calves. And then throughout the day, I just do random, random things that the other sides do, whether it's going out and fixing or building a fence, or just moving some calves, or pretty much anything that happens on a farm. And it's been pretty beneficial to me, because it's taught me how to really take care of animals, and their needs, and how they grow and live, and, yeah, and so for an animal science major, that should help me. After college, I've hoped to be like an animal nutritionist, which would work a lot with dairy cattle, because their diet is so complex. And so, getting to see that firsthand will definitely help me in the future. So, thank you for allowing us to do that on our Fridays.
So, want some more high-maintenance animal, a dairy cow or sheep?
Definitely a cow.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Uh, you got anybody else? Glad to hear that you got your boys.
You're all gonna do very well in your futures.
Thank you.
I've enjoyed watching you guys all grow up, I can't believe you're seniors.
Don't forget your high school when you made your first million.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Number nine, public comment, anybody wants to speak tonight? Okay. Move on to our discussion items, starting number ten, the UNICAM.
Okay, so I included in your folder, and I should've numbered it with the number ten in the upper right-hand corner. I just went through my last few reports that come from the NCSA and also from NERCSA, and just tried to glean off of there, anything that, you know, I thought you, that maybe bring to your attention. Some of these, you know, if they pass, and I don't even know for sure where all of them are right now in their state in the UNICAM, well, some of them may be dead. I don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe any of them have been passed by the UNICAM and signed by the governor, might be the very last page of this whole thing. So, I, you know, I'm not gonna go through all of these by any, by any means, so, some of them you'd be familiar with, you may have heard, you may have heard a little bit about LB-89, for example, is the Stand With Women Act, so that's the one that says, hey, you can leave the bathroom or the locker room of your gender at, at birth, right? And so, that's crazy for us in Plankton to think that we need to have a law to say that, right? But you know the national discourse on that, and so, most legislatures across the fifty states are taking up a similar, are taking up similar pieces of legislature locally. So, a few other interesting ones, you know, the very first one, LB-14, free school meals, so go back to when it was COVID, and you just gave everybody free food. Well, we would be completely dependent upon subsidies from the state for that. That's unlikely to pass, I would say, because the governor right now is not looking to spend any extra money, and this would be quite expensive. So, just a little, a little example on that one, as I kinda look down restrictions, I do have one on there that failed, I guess, which I think affects us, and I might even have mentioned that last month. So, that is kind of a big one, that LB-135, which was gonna start to restrict your ability to determine when you wanna call for a local bond election. So, so that's a positive thing, it'll probably be brought back, but it was lobbied pretty hard by all the construction firms, the suppliers of construction materials, because there would just be, you know, if, if all bond elections were passed at the same time, you would have a serious supply and demand issue. Plus, we would struggle out here in the rural area, because where are most of the construction firms? They'd be in the city, who wants to come out to Plankton when there's ten new schools to be built in the, in the urban area, for example? So, we know what our bids would be. Our bids would be artificially inflated, because they have a lot more work right home where they live, right? So, LB-140, cellphone restrictions, well, Mr. Schmidt's ahead of them on that, we're all, we've already got that in place, so that would, that, that wouldn't affect us.
Can you tell me more about COBE 213?
213, content standards for human embryology, so we would be required to teach how, how an embryo develops in utero. So, so that'd be kinda interesting, right? I mean, I think, so, but, but be required, so we're opposed to it. Now, we're not opposed to teaching that, we're opposed to Lincoln telling us what we have to teach. We do not want them in the business of curriculum development at schools. We want NDE to tell us what we have to teach, we understand that. The Nebraska Department of Education can tell us what we must teach to meet Rule 10 and accreditation. We do not want politicians in Lincoln to tell us what we have to teach statewide. So, we're, we're, we're opposed to that bill, we're not opposed to teaching embryology, but we'd be opposed to that bill. Increase the reimbursement for teachers who purchase school supplies, 282 will probably pass. 300, restricting superintendent pay, and also restricting superintendents to be able to work outside of the superintendent office, so superintendents can't take on any extra employment if they're in contract with the school district. So, a lot of superintendents do maybe adjunct work for local schools and universities, you know, myself included. Again, the, the whole idea is to boost starting teacher pay, not to restrict superintendent pay, because that would only affect two school districts, Lincoln and Omaha. Only in Lincoln and Omaha are the superintendents paid more than five times the starting wage of the teacher in Lincoln and Omaha. TOS formula, now this could affect us, increases foundation aid, now, yeah, so this would be worth about ten thousand dollars to us. 390 is interesting, that initially, they're like, we want parents to be notified every time their kid checks out a book at the library, in the school library. We have to notify the parents what their kid checked out. Okay? Yeah, so initially, they said we had to create an online catalog of all of our library material, materials, they took out online, or digital, they took out, did the word digital and just says you have to maintain a catalog. Most school districts do this, it's, it, it's designed for, you know, parents, right, parents need to know, parents need to be more involved, so they need to know what their, what books their kids are reading. They wanna know what books we might have in here that wouldn't be appropriate for kids to read, because that has been an issue in some, in, in some public school district libraries. I don't think so here. 426, flag education, now, we're not opposed to flag education, we're opposed to the UNICAM telling us that we must teach flag education. So, but that, and we probably do already, quite honestly, I, I don't know for sure, some teacher maybe with a little extra patriotism in their heart, maybe, maybe does some of that, quite honestly, but so, but that's good, flag education is good, but cardiac emergency response, so 463, we're already in Adam Safe School, so we're already essentially there on 463. Okay, student-teacher compensation, 523 is there, now that probably won't make it, because the state says, this is a great idea. Now, a senator, they, they, they may introduce bills, as you all know, they may introduce bills and they know they have no chance of passing, but it's a little bit for publicity with back in their home history, you know, their neighbor tells them they want something, so they go introduce a bill, and, which is something they should do, whether they really think it can pass or not, but. Parent educator retention grants, so they're, they're starting to focus a little bit on the value of parent educators in school districts. We know our certified teachers are invaluable, parent educators are equally invaluable to school districts, and so, if you're, if you serve a school district for X amount of years, they just start to throw some money at you. We already have that for teachers and, and years, you know, and there's a few different programs out there, but if you've taught a particular school district for five years, especially if it's a Title I school-wide district, which is considered to be a low-income district, they're gonna throw some money at you, or in, in student loan relief. 549, school boards can employ a school chaplain in a public school, interesting. 605 would be quite, that, that'd get people maybe interested in what's going on, outlines transgender student participation in extracurricular activities. You know, again, to show you some of the diversity of the folks that are in our UNICAM, 645 is interesting, and first contribution rates, that's changed about four times since it was introduced six weeks ago, and so they are making it more attractive to public school folks, because the state contributes two percent, they don't wanna contribute two percent anymore to our pension, so trying to find a way to save money. 683, do away with pink postcard meeting, because they said, you know, we already have budget hearings, why do we need to have a pink postcard meeting, which is essentially also a budget hearing, in fact, it does meet your statutory requirement for your tax asking hearing, so we, we had participated in that the first year we had it, the last two years. So, anyway, we'll, we'll know a lot more next month, and we'll know everything in the next month. So, they're, they're more than two-thirds of the way down with the session. Doesn't look like anything's gonna come down that's gonna dramatically affect how we operate. That was a quick update, and maybe not so quick update.
Yeah, thanks for parroting. All right, we got number 11, the facilities report.
Good. I, I talked to Bob today, he sent me a draft of the facility audits, a hundred-plus pages. Not, not to worry, he knows how to kinda zip through that. I, I've already noticed a couple things that he needs to fix, so I didn't push it out to you. So, we'll, he's, he'll get some final revisions and edits to that prior to two weeks from today, where he will present that, and again, we'll have about ten hard copies of that, one for every board member, one to be held in the office here, one for our local media. Other than that, the, the biggest maybe movement right now is with our municipal advisor, or our fiscal agent, Tobin Buchanan, who I'm gonna recommend be, be part of this process, it comes at some expense, but they do help us with the entire process, and obviously, their best interest is to help you get the yes votes out, and then they shop the bonds, they don't buy all the bonds at the same time, so the expense that you pay for their services is recouped, and they're finding the best deal for your bonds, should, should a bond election pass, so Tobin's coming a week from tomorrow to prep for the meeting two weeks from tonight. He will be present, because you will have a question, how are we gonna pay for this? What's it gonna cost, how are we gonna pay for this? We don't know what it's gonna cost, but we can start to talk about different finance options, whether we're talking two million or twenty million. We, we need to be prepared to answer that question. Tobin's expertise will be helpful, and he'll bring some credibility to, to that meeting with regard to, what's this gonna cost, how are we gonna pay for it?
I've kinda asked the budget committee to meet on that, and we're gonna sit with Tobin next Tuesday night, and he'll give us examples of how, you know, we can, well, we can, how we can best explain it, because we're gonna get that question, you know, on the 28th.
Yep. And we'll even ask Tobin.
It's too bad he can't be here with everybody.
Yes. Will, will it be reasonable on that evening, two weeks from tonight, when somebody asks a question, to just, this is Tobin Buchanan from Northland Group, is it okay for? Is it okay for him to maybe answer one of our stakeholders' questions? And will they be, will they be comfortable with that, not hearing from somebody they don't know, although, you know, an expert that we've engaged with? We'll find out if he, we may or may not have a calculator ready for our stakeholders to access, to begin to play with, to put some numbers in. And they can play with a lot of different numbers, they can put a five million dollar bond in there, they can put a fifty million dollar bond in there, and they can start to maybe generate based on their own property. And, and that will be helpful, that would be helpful to you, because they'll know what their limit is and.
So he's, he's willing to be at that, at that meeting?
Yes, yes, on the twenty-eighth. So a week from tomorrow, five thirty, budget committee will, will meet with him. The, the Lincoln Street paving bids are due on the twenty-fourth of this month to the city. So I, I can't speak for the city council, but they will have bids in front of them to pave Lincoln. And so obviously that's a keen interest of, of ours as well, because we know we will bear slightly under fifty percent of that expense. Jeremy, Mr. Tar couldn't be here tonight, but he just said, well, we don't know anything, right now we're just waiting for bids to come in. So they'll come in the twenty-fourth, exactly what process they'll use to unseal those and when, you know, I'm not sure, but I'm sure we'll be one of the first to know. What those bids look like and if the city council intends to accept the low bid, or whether they want to maybe engage with us, since your expense is going to be, you know, up between forty and fifty percent, I would expect. If, they'll say, well, here's, here's what we see, here's, here's what we'd like to go with, I'm sure you, you'll likely, hopefully see the, the same thing. And we'll have some clarity on, on just what, what that will be, and it'll start, really start the, the conversation about, is the closing of Woodland a viable option? Because that is a massive difference maker in the progress of your facility conversation.
If the city decides, I'm not sure how the process works, but if the city decides to pay Lincoln Street anyway, I mean, we really, we have, we're just required to go ahead and pay for half, right? I mean, it's really kind of out of our hands as far as the decision to pay Lincoln Street, correct?
I think it is, why.
Can't, can't object.
I think if you objected for whatever reason, I mean, if it were, if, if, if the bids are wildly.
Right.
Out of expectation, number one, they'll probably become more hesitant, because then they're going to take two hits. A massive tax, a massive amount of taxes to pave it, and then we're going to close Woodland. Those are going to be two significant tough decisions for the city council. Again, I can't speak for them, but can they pave it and send us a bill? I think they can, because.
Isn't it just like, they're paving your street in town?
Well, gap street paving is different.
Okay.
And so if it's a gap street, that, that is different, they, I know they can pave that and send you a bill. Non-gap street, which this isn't, I don't know the particulars, legalities of that.
Well, Derek and I have worked at the city, we went through that process and we had several homeowners that came and spoke. It's kind of changing the minds of the, the folks that are on the board, so they either came and spoke in favor or they spoke against having their streets done. And they're like, Fourth Street was an example of one of the streets they talked about and the, the board decided not to do that, not to pursue those streets. So it would be something that you could show up and lobby for, which way you wanted to go, for sure.
Since the time is still a bond.
Yeah.
There's one I'm asking, but if a bond would have to fail, I mean, it's like, but pave Lincoln Street, we're going to have to pay for that somehow.
You'd be looking at a multi-year building fund levy. And it's in our best interest anyway, from my perspective.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, so be interested to see what the bids are, they will be higher than we think.
Yeah, we already are higher than what we thought, when we started this conversation a, a year ago, we're a long ways away from where we really thought we were going to be. So just, just asking the question.
Yeah.
Remind me, are we, are we cost sharing Lincoln Street and the north-south, what's that, north-south?
Just gate-to-gate on Lincoln. Gate-to-gate. City will go, will continue to go east to finish Lincoln. Right up to Pine and then Pine back south. And of course Pine, Pine is going to be about half the width of Lincoln. So, I mean, it, it's going to be a very nice and wide, just in a whole lot of concrete and curving and, and drainage and, so it, it's.
That accommodated for parking as well.
Yes, yes, yeah, there's going to be parking both sides of Lincoln, but the, the concrete goes all the way to the fence to the football field.
When Jeremy initially presented this to us, he mentioned that there would be a housing development going in over there, so drainage would be required. Housing Development's directed at this school.
The drainage benefits the track and football field. That's where the water goes, right?
And, and it doesn't go very far, from the concession stand to the spillway, about eight inches. You know, from that, yeah, that slope, and so water actually is going to curve around the west of the track. And then existing where it goes on the, on the north side, and it'll, it'll, it'll hit that corner again and go straight south. So, so that spillway is going to be managing quite a bit more water than it currently does, and there's hardly any slope to that. But the engineer said that this is, this is how we can do it. Water's not going to move very fast, but it'll move, especially with concrete.
Sure.
So it'll, it'll handle some of our real sloppy areas on the southeast part of the, of the football field track and the track shed. That's about this deep to the water table, half inch of rain and you, you're, you've got standing water, you know, right there. So concrete drainage will, will help alleviate that, you know, but that's a bit of a side, you know, positive result of it. So we'll, we'll know more when they unseal them after the twenty-fourth of April.
All right, number twelve, and a report from negotiations. Do they have?
They do, it's number sixteen in your, in your packet, not your folder.
Classified salaries, we're basically going to make this real clean and simple. What we're proposing and recommending anyway is just a three percent, three and a half percent raise across the board. In addition to any longevity increase that God coming. So for some of them, it may equate to a five percent raise. But, or maybe even five half, I guess Tom Sauer is looking at two percent longevity on top of the three and a half percent. So I'd rather all, put that to be about forty-two thousand dollars, about a half cent, but. But I guess our justification on that was teachers, it was comparable to teacher's raise anyway, the negotiated agreement. And they got a two and a half percent raise last year, and we feel like that was quite enough, anyway, so three and a half percent this year. Where are the longevity?
Okay.
Where do they get that for something?
I got that, I have that right here, right behind you. So longevity for, ooh, hang on, sorry, longevity for next year, so they get a one percent at year two. Now, this was a board decision, what, prior to any of you being here, so you, only a board can change a board's decision, but this has been in effect for many, many years. So if you come back a second year, you get an extra one percent increase over the base increase, so. And then year four is one, one and a half, and then it's two percent increases at six, nine, thirteen, seventeen, twenty-one, seventeen. And then, so I have all our classified employees on here in a certain row. So for example, our, our, our business manager Kelly Pendergast last year was year nine, so she got a two percent bump for this current year. But now she's in year ten next year, so she's a few years away from another longevity bump. Obviously, it's to, to reward years of service and to provide encouragement. They, you know, I'm going to stay another year so I get that extra two percent bump. So the board saw a fit several years ago to provide some incentive to classified staff.
What, under Tom's, what is that, ten extended?
Yeah, so Mr. Sauer spends a lot of time in the summer working on technology. That's increased pretty significantly since we've gone one-to-one in the past five years, so we have, you know, three hundred devices district-wide now. So when those devices come in, he cleans them up and makes them like new for the, to be reissued in the fall. That's iPads and Chromebooks and Teacher MacBooks. So he spends a pretty significant amount of time on that in the summer. And then installing access points, do you have any of those, running new wire for, for two or three summers in a row? When we were doing some lights, tile and grid work, it was a good opportunity for him to run some new cable. So he spent many, many days, many more than ten days, I would expect, up here running cable between a variety of different buildings. So that's something, as far as I know, he's always had since he's worked here, now going on seventeen years, that he has a extended, extended contract. So we've just continued with that.
We did make one adjustment, because small adjustment, and that was under the custodians. Phil Westrum with Nick's longevity and his three and a half percent increase, he was actually going to surpass Bill in wage. And so we bumped Bill up to eighteen dollars an hour. Two more years anyway, he's got one more experience anyway. So that would be the one thing that you want to strike, and now the wage, and like, eighteen bucks anyway for a wage bill.
Okay.
So that's about it. Can't get much fairer than, everybody having the same thing.
This is a lot easier conversation, we're heading past.
Yeah, it gets hard to pick and choose, so. Sometimes you need to do it to get some people back into, back into line, but, yeah. Okay, well, we'll get to that later on in the interaction items, any other questions? Okay, number thirteen, activities cooperative. Yeah, that was, that was something that Osman had came to, Dr. Earl, I'd heard from the board president too, that they're, you know, dealing with some smaller numbers coming down the road. And certain activities of theirs, they've been partnering, you know, with Randolph and Wassa in the past, we kind of heard from them, but they've had a little trouble getting a long-term commitment. They're, they're kind of tired of their kids and their parents going here, going there, one year, you know, in two years I'll go here. They're looking for something, a long-term agreement, basically, we heard the word commitment a lot, we, we met with the board, three of their board members at night as well. And their A D, superintendent, and activities director.
Principal, activities director, superintendent.
Yeah, so we had a really good conversation, just discussing, you know, what, what their needs are right away, how it might look in the future, you know, if we got into some type of agreement with them. You guys have any, anything to add to that? Kind of, we did tell them, we want to take that to the full board, definitely have a conversation, see how it goes. But kind of told them we'd get back to them after our big activities.
So.
Our facilities meeting on the twenty eighth.
Right.
So what, what, what we're kind of at, was willing to ease into is a junior high co-op for all sports, year one. Which actually will be next year, anyway, and then if that went well, then we'd come back to the table and talk about potential high school co-op then. It is worth noting that they are currently on a four-year agreement with Wassa, but they thought they could break that way in year two. It's only for football and wrestling, only, is what it is. Otherwise, they're kind of, they're kind of twisting the wind, honestly, every other sport. Basketball is one that they, they're really are searching for, just for a few boys, anyway. But they, they were not pushing that on us, anyway, for next year at all. They have a full girls team, they have a schedule that they're very committed to, we like that, they don't want to have parents go in one direction for boys, one direction for girls. And so what they're pitching to us was, year one, we kind of thought this was a good idea, was junior high sports only and maybe get it by bowling, correct? And high school bowling, anyway, call it a trial period, see if everybody works out, anyway. And they would come here as pirates, they agreed it wouldn't be a problem at all. I don't know whether we call them, you know, put it on their roster, playing for Osman Pirates, I mean, whatever we want to do, anyway. But that's up for discussion, but they're, they're looking for a commitment anyway at home, anyway, for some, for some kids, anyway. And, you know, it seems like it might get fit, the truth.
Can I have more information on the four-year agreement with Wassa and why it would be ending early?
So when you do a co-op, you have to do a two-year agreement through the NSA. The four-year agreement, I would say, is more like a gentleman's handshake type agreement. It's, it's not.
Biding it anyway.
It's not legal. It's not legal. I don't think they were looking forward to breaking that agreement by any means, but they're, they're just not, the way they made it sound, they're not getting a whole lot in return on. They're not discussing things, it sounds like, it's kind of.
They're not getting answers to their questions.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're getting a whole lot of wait, wait, you know, they got a six-year number out there, they're supposed to kind of sit on their hands until then. And even then, they don't know what's going to happen. So for wrestling and football, and I don't know how FFA works with the. Okay, so those two were the, the four-year agreement. They have to play football with Wassa for two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six, and they have to do boys wrestling for that year. Everything else, they're open, as of right now, they're not going to have a boys' basketball team. They're barely fielding a girls' basketball team, but they do have a schedule.
Which they worked pretty hard to get last year, so they don't really want to break that relationship, they went to some.
Because we had brought up, or someone had brought up, girls' wrestling on top of unified wrestling. They weren't too excited to do that unless we were also doing girls' basketball, because they were worried it was going to potentially pull numbers from their girls' basketball team. So then I think they had kind of just said, look, we want to wait on that, but unified bowling would be easy enough, we bowl over there already. And junior high was kind of what we had, I guess, discussed to, as a trial.
One thing they mentioned in their previous agreements, they were always concerned about was class, jumping up a class, you know.
Osman was, and it was the schools they were going with.
Did not want to jump up the class.
That was the big concern, was not.
Problem with Osman's. We get together in certain bits and jump a class, that's not a problem with them.
If, if you look at that.
I thought it might come a little bit wrong with the views.
I, I'm hearing a mixture of views, and, and the people that are, are not initially for it, it's all about class, it's all about not wanting to bump into class. I guess that's the right to worry about competing at higher levels, but if you look on.
Iron terms, iron.
Look at, look at these, look at these numbers.
Do you have those in front of you? Yeah. I think it'd be great to see us provide district two football.
We, we got class sizes forty, thirty-three, forty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-nine, forty-four, a lot of thirties and forties instead of twenties and teens. Now, try to get those kids to go out, at our school in there's, you know, I think that's a problem we need to deal with separately. And participation numbers aren't where they should be. That's, that's a different issue altogether.
Well, I can't say, I'm sure it's higher, a little bit more competition to make the varsity team.
Make it better.
Well, culture.
I hope we change the culture.
So there's, there are boys that want to play basketball, just want a place to play basketball, or?
Wassa won't take them.
But that's not part of our agreement, though. They did not mention that would have to be anything immediate.
No, I mean, they, they, they told us, yeah. I mean, they basically kind of said they were willing to do whatever we're willing to. But they're cherry picking sports right now based on Wassa. Basically, Wassa, they can get their numbers and say, in six years, let's talk about basketball. And, you know, when they know that they're going to be in trouble.
They want, it's a hard, you know, they want to know where they're going to.
Yeah, so they're kind of up in the air, and their, their kids want direction.
Well, we need to help with bowling, so this is definitely help our bowling program.
Yeah.
Need to help the girls wrestling too, right?
Girls wrestling, I mean.
It's not like girls wrestling going on the table.
No, I know, but I'm talking down the road.
We could use a little help in a, in a lot of things. So, yeah.
I think it would help.
Absolutely.
Like, I think this would also help the new facility deal if we would ever do that. Because if this is actually on the table, what's going to happen? If we have a brand new school, it's a pretty good possibility that Western Pierce County Unified District ends up being in Blainville instead of somewhere else.
And that's the one part of that.
And eventually, I mean, that could be inevitable, and probably a little bounce.
Well, I think everybody, if, if we're, if we're looking at right now, we don't need to do anything right now, but the other discussions we're having are considering the next fifty years of what Pliny looks like, not this year. Yeah, I think that makes Pliny the place to be. I personally, I don't know, that if we take that moment, it'd be awesome if we could get those tax dollars someday too. But I think every co-op, or every, if you want to say consolidation, because they did bring that up. That always starts with a co-op. If it goes well, and we discuss that, that would, I think that would help a lot.
And they're willing to be pirates, is that what you said?
Yes, they don't have a problem with that at all. They know that, and said that we're, we're a smaller school, we don't expect to come in. You know, have to change things, we just want to compete with them.
So then I would say we can afford to buy some new jerseys if we have to.
Yeah, if it works out, they have that extra year over at Wassa that allows us to have the opportunity for ease in. Yeah, they, they might ask for some home stands potentially. Some home stands potentially.
Like a homecoming game.
I don't, I don't like, I would ask that. We don't, we don't have details on that.
I think that's, that's on the bottom.
They're not asking for, yeah, we haven't got to that point yet, they just said, no, go off you.
Yeah, they want to know, would that be out of the question? Would, they, they said, we don't want it to be a deal breaker anymore, but, you know. It wasn't like they said, can we practice in Osman half the time and play half the time? It was, you're playing a practice here.
We still have to get through junior high sports first.
Right, yeah.
You know, we're, we're, we're still, we're, we're, we're not going to get too far ahead of ourselves here, but, anyway, but yeah. That's how the conversation. We did, we did ask them to, you know, if their whole board is on, is on the same page, and they seem, they definitely are. Yeah. Good. So this is, this is happening after a facility deal. Correct. We're going to try and get back together again. Then it'll probably be a lot more firm then by some point, then we have something to make motion on next week.
But it was, yeah, it was good initial talks.
Sounds good.
Yeah, they, they've kind of been through the wringer. So I think the general sentiment in, in Osman is, they just want direction. You know, they, they're, they understand, they can't offer boys basketball right now, they can't. There's a lot of things they're struggling with. You know, there are years where it's going to be better for them, but they, they, their community is okay with it. I think they just want to know what direction they need to go.
This isn't that far away. I mean, they're very cool over here for these sports.
Yeah.
A lot, soccer, they would come this way, football, they would learn cattle partnership. It's just a little out too, honestly. They don't root in baseball. And there's a lot of interaction between boys wrestling, you know, maybe a lot of kids are playing wrestling too. There's already a lot of interactions with the kids. Kids won't be the problem to here.
Yeah. We did ask, you know, what's going well with, what went well with Randolph, what went well with, what's going well with Wassa. And they did say, the kids are going to win, great, that's not a problem. It's maybe parents and fear of moving up the class. I mean, that's, that was basically what they said was the big objection. Was competing in a higher class.
And I would imagine that would be the number one.
That's the one objection I've heard so far.
From our parents too, is.
I don't, I don't quite understand why you'd be so scared to jump up the class. Because if you're, I mean, football, you got three more guys on the field, you know, three more positions to play. So they, I, I guess I just don't understand why.
Well, we don't want to get, like, don't want to get too far ahead of things, right? Because we're not prepared yet anyway.
What are their class sizes during, during?
If you look at that spreadsheet, you'll see.
It looks like this, Wassa.
Pretty well consistent at ten in last fall.
For, are you looking at the total?
For boy, for either boy or girl.
If, if you're curious on how it would be classified anyway, if you look with, Kyle put this, he did a really good job. You can see over there on the right-hand column where we'd classify it for football, cross-country, volleyball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball.
Changes football?
Football number changed yesterday to fifty-five. Not yesterday, Friday, Thursday, Thursday.
Changed it where?
Fifty-five and three classes at eight man.
Are they taking any away?
No.
No?
So eight man won't be played at Memorial anymore?
Southern state champions in football.
Right now, they're talking about U K, but we'll see what happens.
No eight, no eight, no eight man listed. They can't, they can't afford that on third day. Or we shut it down.
This year's set, but this.
Well, we, we'll still be over that number with the exception of one cycle, no, two cycles.
Well, that's if we don't gain kids too, I mean.
Well, we'd be over that fifty-five number based on what you gave us, fifty-nine, fifty-nine, then fifty-four, fifty-two, then seventy-one. That's all we have to compete in really well.
We have a ton of boys in kindergarten, first grade, preschool, a ton of boys.
I'm very excited about this.
So, I don't know why I said they're looking for direction, they're also looking for stability, and you touched on that. But most importantly, they're looking for somebody to treat them right and respect them. They, they, I feel like they haven't really been appreciated or respected, because they're not in a position to really contribute to somebody, and that, that's mattering too much to where they've been. So that's a hard, that'll be a hard thing for folks to maybe kind of overcome. We're going to bump up a class, but they don't, but they don't help us, they don't bring us athletes or numbers. That's, that's just the way, that, that's the, that's, that's what you embrace and accept when you have these conversations that you choose.
I wouldn't say they're not going to contribute either, I'd just say, like, they're looking at specific years and saying, you're not going to contribute this year, but you will.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I, I used to coach in a co-op, and there was years where it was Crofton that we built. There was years where I wondered why we had both built. And there was years where I wondered why we had Crofton. And then there's years where I was glad we had both, you know? It, it cycled through, and in the end, it was great, we did that. That was a good partnership, it was good for that team. But there was years where it wasn't either, which is how it's going to be.
I think ultimately, this is stuff in the right direction, which doesn't affect us in the discussions. The future of our town, the future of our school.
For the, for the discussions.
Talks will continue on. All right, policy review, number fourteen.
Okay, these, these three policies are primarily about curriculum, and our curriculum specialists are principals. So Kyle and Jen are going to take the lead on the conversation about these revisions, or these reviews.
The only thing we really need changed is on this one, they have specific years and dates of when they wrote the standards. Those have all been updated since this has last been reviewed, so ELA would change to twenty-twenty-one. Math is twenty-twenty-two, science twenty-twenty-four, and then social studies was twenty-nineteen. So those are the, the things that have been updated, but other than that, everything else is exactly what we do and how we go about it. So when I read through them today, I didn't have any other changes other than making sure those dates were updated in, in the system that we use.
Any language revision or anything here, Kyle and Jen? Essentially.
This one's just saying that the board adopts whatever curriculum we present from.
Yeah, so primarily, you know, if there's a curriculum change, it, it, it generally doesn't come from your principals. It does come from N D E, through your administrative team. We bring it to you, you approve it, because you own policy. But we don't, we don't have anything, any recommendations for, for language change of the adoption process. We lost all the students at curriculum review.
They hit the hour mark.
Oh, that's right, they have to, for a government requirement, they have to spend one hour at a civic meeting.
Social studies.
It's eight oh one. Curriculum eval, I mean, I, yeah.
Why would that bore them?
They, they, we usually will use teachers to help, you know, teachers, obviously, they implement your curriculum. They're the ones who carry it out, right? So any type of evaluation includes a team of teachers that Kyle and Jen have bring together. You know, I guess anytime we, we have a resource recommendation, a change of resources, which is a big expense, which you've had, you have a, a taste of one in your folder, that usually comes on the heels of an evaluation of curriculum. Of course, resources are not curriculum, they're, they're, they help you implement the curriculum, but they're woven together, so. Yeah, curriculum is always not the most exciting thing, but it is, right, it is the meat and potatoes of what we do. So just the revision to six oh three oh one, and then the review on six oh three oh two and oh four. Since the, the dates were mandated for, for here, for curriculum development, since these dates were essentially mandated, because those changes happen, we don't need you to, to approve it. Okay, because that's just imposed upon you. Okay, that's all we have for that.
It says that, is that the bare minimum, that you go higher?
Yes, minimum standard.
It's like your textbook can't be any older, in case twenty-twenty-one, is that what it means?
That's the year that they wrote the, the state standards, and so those are the revisions.
Oh, the standards that the state wrote, is that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's what our teachers look at when we do subject area content meetings, and they develop our pacing guide and all those things that we follow for our curriculum.
And we review the books yearly, or?
Cyclically, by content.
Yes.
Do our curriculum yearly, and then typically when we redo standards and the state rewrites them, that's when we reevaluate resources to make sure they still match.
So that when he comes in, looks at a bunch of books, takes their recommendation, and decides whatever he wants.
Okay. Move on into number fifteen, our action items. Discuss and take possible action on the first track timing system. Twenty-nine, three eighty-five, this is what we talked about last. Table for a while, the question I have is, how would you still have two meets if we would get this, that you'd be able to use it for? If you're three or?
If it makes here, here in time, we'd have three.
You'd have three.
Yep, and next year, I'm, I have next year's stuff set up, we'll have five, so.
Do you, can you use this on cross-country meet titles? You could.
Yep.
I don't know if we do, we do either.
We had to rent Hardington's when we hosted.
So you would use it this year?
And Jen's talked about trying to find a week we can start our own up again, so.
So it's, it's portable, the system is?
Yep.
And I was asked.
We discussed it last time. Oh, so we'd take it out there?
Yep.
We went and got Wes Holtz to run our last two.
He's picked a couple of real nice days.
First day was phenomenal. We got a patent on.
Wasn't it windy that day though?
You what?
Wasn't it really windy that Friday of the?
It was raining.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it was a grabby.
Travis pulled out Randolph, I pulled out Pierce.
It was a good time.
They got stuck in the lot. Memories.
I asked you the last time, what schools could you rent that out to to make a little extra money from the system?
I know Summerland's looking at starting their own track paint. I've talked to David Wayne before, he's normally, it's Black Squirrel, but he'd be willing to. Just kind of depends.
So just two?
I haven't really reached any harder than that. I know Hardington does quite a few of them, so.
But that's something we would maybe be looking at doing.
We could possibly, if you wanted to. I would suggest not letting it go anywhere without Tom.
So it was what, was it a thousand or fifteen hundred bucks you typically have to, when you rent it?
We normally a thousand, yep.
And they send the guy to, or not?
Yeah, they come and run it. Wes Holtz only charged us seven fifty, but Tom and I had a hour training when we picked it up and weaved our way through it. I made a few mistakes.
That seems the system you're looking at here, that you're already familiar with.
Yep.
How long have we been using it, that type of timing?
Five years, six. No, we didn't have track number this year, five years.
Pretty much every, everybody uses that electronic timing.
Yeah, in order to host districts, you have to have it.
How does it work with the kids, like, do they have a, some tracks on?
If you stay in your own lane for the entire race, that's all done by the camera at the end, and you can see the lane lines that they run in. So you just click on the kid, and as you click on them and scroll through it, because it captures them as they cross. So you can just keep scrolling back through the film, and you click on them, and it gives them a time that it all starts when they shoot to go. So.
They don't have like a tracker on them or something?
No, all they have to do is put a sticker on their leg if it's a mile, two mile, or four by eight, or four by four.
How's it work for cross-country then?
They do a fromo recognition.
Oh, okay.
So as they come through, they catch the bib numbers. And so you have a person write down the bib number as they come through, so you have the order, and then you match it up with the timing system.
And you got pictures and everything then, that, because of parents or whatever, or whatever you do with those?
Yeah, that's not quite.
It's not shareable, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, not going to catch pictures.
So ever since we did this, it's, it's safe not having timers, pickers?
Yeah, coaches don't have to time or anything, so it's kind of become the norm for track meets. A lot of teams like to get into track meets that have it, so they can coach instead of time.
And your results are just instant?
Ours were instantly, as soon as the race was, was over, it was on the internet, so we uploaded it directly.
Is there, is there a portal or a website or?
Yeah, athletic dot net is what we use.
So the kids can go and see their results?
Yep.
It's like track racing.
Actually, a lot of coaches.
Like track racing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so same, same purpose. Like track, yeah.
So like districts, a lot of it's set up live, as they cross the finish line, it'll pop up their name and their time online, and it'll be done, and you can see it right away.
And like track racing, you can see where your kid is going to be coming up, when they're coming up, where they're.
Oh, oh, that's cool.
Yeah, they give the list of events in order.
There's some, there's some planning in advancing for that, is there?
Yeah. Coaches put everything in, Tom organizes it, and see that the, the morning of, and then after the coaches meeting, we sit in the trailer and we reseed everything based on the scratches and ads, and that's all live online, so.
Does it speed up the meets like it said in the literature? You know, definitely, you know, trackers don't run longer.
Yeah. Yep, you don't have to sit there and write everybody's time down and go through that process, so.
So this would be a, a, a specific item that we didn't talk about during the budgeting process last summer. But this is precisely the reason that we budget funds to subsidize some of our accounts, specifically nutrition and activity, and which athletics falls under. This would be paid out of, out of athletics, which is within the activity fund. So we, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to subsidize those two funds. We won't spend that much money, but I did want to budget, so if you have unexpected or unanticipated purchases, something that's out of your control, or something comes up and, you know, could or should we have talked about this last August? Well, possibly, but, so, so we do have funds, you know, general fund. Possibly, but, so, so we do have funds, you know, general fund to subsidize this purchase. So it's been budgeted for, not precisely, but every school district does budget some funds for unexpected or unanticipated purchases.
How much money is currently available in that account?
Uh, one hundred and ninety thousand. We've, we've, we've transferred sixty of two hundred and fifty. Now, again, we don't want to spend two fifty, budgeted for it. And I, I don't know what else I expect, this plus, we will need to make another general subsidy before the end of fiscal in the amount of maybe another fifty grand, you know, or more. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that as we get close to end of fiscal. But we won't go over budget in activity. But auditors don't like that we have any of those buckets, and we can call them buckets, right? When you look at your activity, the auditors don't like any bucket to be in the red. I don't know why, it doesn't matter, you know, they're all part of one fund, which every school district subsidizes. Every school district. Athletics runs in the red by five figures or more in every school district, and that's just the nature of it, so. So there are funds.
Your two hundred and fifty was, was that for both funds, nutrition?
Yes, nutrition depreciation and activity. We don't necessarily need to put anything in depreciation, it's good, it's a little piggy bank. So you could take the balance of the, whatever's left of that two fifty in August and you could put it into depreciation and then it's spendable income moving forward. A, a, a spendable fund, I should say, shouldn't necessarily be called income, but.
Or like a week out for shipping? Eight to ten days for shipping, for it to ship out. That's before they send it and it's over on the gear.
Can this also be used for cross-country?
Yes.
Will, will we be hosting cross-country meets here?
It's a matter of if we can find a date on the calendar. If we can find a date, I would love to have a home meet.
Understood.
We don't currently.
We do not.
Thirty-seven years, well, or conference.
Several years.
Every, every seven, we'd host a conference, we could put in for a district, but I don't, I don't know the process for that, you know, Dave.
Conference was a learning curve.
I don't know, so maybe a few years on the road, after we've had our own for a few years.
Well, we'll try anything, once.
Love, we'd love to host events, bring people to the event.
I know we talked last time about you could go with a lesser package, you know, but what you've heard, everybody kind of, you end up eventually getting.
All the schools I've talked to have all said that they buy the second camera, so.
And it costs more, right, is that what you said?
Yeah, if you were to go with the package lower and then add the camera later, you'll end up spending more than what you spent on this package now.
Those are, those are better results and then the wind, you could sort of switch it back and forth.
Yep.
There's several advantages to that.
Yep.
It works better in the rain too. Works better in the rain too.
Yeah, especially when you have a tote, it's very nice.
I heard you had to put a tote on.
Patent that thing, it's a beaut.
Need to put on there, embrace the suck.
Should have had Wyatt run with that shirt on.
Not everybody was embracing the suck, not that much, I'll tell you that.
I'm not going to lie to you, I'm hesitant about spending that kind of money, but if we're going to be hosting more track meets and we set three this year, five next year.
Yep, we'll have a total of five that we use it for next year.
We would use it for five this year if we'd had it, right?
Six, for this year.
So consistently moving forward, we'll be hosting more, which benefits every business in this town. I would like to see, if we decide to do this, I would like to see a rented out some.
Okay, maybe not the first year.
Maybe not the first year. I would like to see it bringing some.
Yeah, anytime you can get a little extra. Elkhorn Valley, I forgot, they'll have a new track in twenty twenty-six, right? So when that one will be done.
Spring of twenty-six?
I think it's supposed to be done next spring, but we'll see if it's done or not, so.
Well, I appreciate the extra time you got to discuss this, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to purchase the links timing system for twenty-nine thousand three eighty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, move it second to purchase the links timing system, twenty-nine thousand three eighty-five, discussion. Not a vote, myself yes, Wyatt.
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Number sixteen, to discuss and take possible action on setting our classified wages for twenty-five, twenty-six. Kind of did that, all those details before.
I think we heard that before. I'll make the motion to accept the classified wa, uh, wages scale for the twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
I'll second.
I'll take it with me.
I say louder.
All right, move it second to accept classified wages scale for twenty-five, twenty-six, discussion. Not a vote, Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yourself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Kayden? Motion carried. Number seventeen, discuss and take possible action to approve a one point oh FTE certified teaching contract with Brad Gatlin.
Correct.
For the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
So, yep, we've, we've had four candidates in the past two years, offered to hold four, they've all turned us down. It's a good thing because he's by far the best before we've had over the past two years. Comes to us from HTRS, bringing a family, bringing a daughter, coming to town in two weeks to sign papers on the house, move to town. And we've, we've just received some really nice feedback from him too. We have our staff send all new teachers who they don't know and likely haven't met. I give them, I send an email and information out, I said, this person's going to become part of our team. Send them a, a welcome note via email. So I heard from Brad today, he said, I am just overwhelmed by the welcome we are receiving from your community and your staff. We, we can't wait to become Plainview Pirates. So that's just part of our culture, half of our teachers that, that, well, those that have, we've hired in the past ten years know what that's about because they've been on the receiving end of that, of those messages. So he's very excited to come and join us. We're lucky to have him, we've told him, we, we kind of lured him a little bit by saying, hey, you're going to help us to reimagine a new shop space, twenty-first century shops, right? I told every candidate that, going back to Derek June, but, so, but he's like, yeah, there's, there's possibilities here, but he's bringing a different skill set to us as well and he's going to help us. Sometimes you fit your curriculum unless it's your, your, your core content. You fit your curriculum towards somebody's expertise, so as you look at his resume, you can see some things like, hey, there's some interesting skills there that he might bring to, to our kids. So he's already asked about that, we love the leadership, we love his experience. Yeah, he'd be a, a great addition to our community and to our faculty.
I'm not saying anything bad about him or anything, but just curious how come he was at the last school for almost thirteen years and he decided to leave? Just want to make sure.
Yep, yep, okay, he has a science endorsement on his teaching certificate and HTRS was going to move him to the science classroom because they can't find a science teacher.
And he doesn't want to.
So they were going to, yep, they were going to change his assignment.
Well, that's a good.
And he's like, I want to be industrial technology.
Which looks like his professional experience is in.
So is he, is his daughter young?
His daughter is a third grader.
So their family is probably still expanding.
Will be a fourth grader, he has adult children.
Okay.
Already, so.
I was going to say, he's got, he, he taught in the nineties, ninety-four to ninety-nine.
He's going to be getting up there. I'm trying to be mean.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he, he's not a novice by, by any means. He's got a master's degree, so we're not paying for a, a forty-one thousand dollar teacher. You know, he comes with some expertise, some experience, some education.
Sorry, coached a little, are we, are we looking at that for the?
No, no. Wasn't part of the conversation, doesn't mean that if something doesn't happen, unexpected between now and then, that, that Kyle may, you know, have a conversation with him about that. But it wasn't part of the interview conversation, any, any kind of extracurriculars at this time.
Good, is it ready?
It'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve our teaching contract for Brad Gatlin for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
I'll second that. Move it second to approve one point oh FTE teaching contract for Brad Gatlin for twenty-five, twenty-six year. Discussion? Not a vote, Wyatt?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Motion carried. And move on to eighteen, discuss and take possible action on setting the three thousand dollars in CD.
Yeah, back to your earlier question, I guess that, that was the rate that was quoted to me, so I would guess that's maybe the best rate, so it might be the shortest term. Which, you know, you guys know how those work, it's a bit of a gamble, or certainly a higher expert level of knowledge to anticipate whether a shorter term is going to reflect a little more interest. If you're worried about volatility of market. But I don't think that rate, that three point, I don't think anything would change between this month and next, so. I was maybe even going to recommend maybe two hundred thousand dollars, by next month you'll see just how significant maybe our May revenue will be. You may be in a position to, to invest more. Again, I, our, well, my goal was to, to get ourselves back to a million dollars in CDs, that's what we all inherited, was a million dollars in CDs by your predecessors, so. We're, we're three hundred short of that. We borrowed four, we've reinvested one, we're three short of a million yet. And you had a healthy general fund with significant property tax, we're going to cover the next one.
So you're saving flights, it makes you liquid.
Yeah.
Right? So maybe you just pull from it?
Yep.
You can't, you put it back, you have to put it back for a certain amount of time?
You can, in and out on, on a flat.
So it's like a checking account that accrues interest, so.
I, I don't.
I mean, just in and out, makes it checks out.
To see, yeah, but that, that's what it's going to explain to me, yeah.
And now, I think it's like, depending on, it's probably under six months or at least under a year, and I think you can only take out of the ones.
You only draw one, so.
I believe so.
That make sense?
But I did not talk to them yet.
No, I.
I'm sure you can't have the activity.
Well, that's what it is.
Not the activity of a.
A routine activity.
That's, that's not what we're looking for here.
No, I know, I just, we're, we're looking for something. Flex means what, variable rate then, or is that fixed rate?
It deflects, but the ability to.
Let's pull rate, or that's just flexible, so that's a fixed rate.
That would be fixed for the term.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking what the term was.
Right.
Or, or eight, or two, or whatever.
Yeah.
It was just how to get the product, so.
Not sure.
Flexibility and cashing hours and whatnot, and like, and stuff, but do they have variable rate for the CDs?
No.
Kind of like you want me to point out, do you?
No, because I'm guessing they're going down.
Yeah.
On, on markets. Oh, I guess. Assuming they're all fixed.
So do we, we need to decide on what we're comfortable for a term then? Because we don't have a term listed here, so do we?
I think we could go ahead and approve it and Dr. Earl, I guess, go ahead and choose which, which probably, probably fits the best.
I can confirm with you tomorrow.
He's already kind of picked, right, you just don't know what the, the term was anyway.
Yeah, some of it's five eleven or twenty-one month, the, the regular CD terms are five eleven to twenty-one.
The important thing is to get back up to, to, to sock away that hundred thousand anyway and, and go ahead and make motion to do that.
With the guidance of just best term and.
Yep. Yeah, I think if we can do it right now, just get that, go back in there, give us backwards. A month, I think might be down to a half percent.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to invest a hundred thousand dollars from a general fund into a flex CD at three point eight percent interest at Midwest Bank.
I'll second.
And I will not cry if it's a higher interest rate.
Kayden, we've got it. Move it second to then invest a hundred thousand from a general fund in a flex CD at three point eight percent at Midwest Bank. Discussion? Not a vote, myself, yes, Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to our reports, activities director.
Uh, speech team, wanted to give a shout out to them, they're district runner-ups and also state runner-up, so. State champs last year, state runner-up this year, a couple of great years. Winner, academic all-state winners, I gave you the list, all the kids from the winter season that, that received that award from the NSAA. We have district music here at the end of the month in Laurel, that is next Friday, I believe. All day in Laurel. Again, we host district track on the fourteenth and then we have our athletic banquet on May fifteenth. And then I put at the bottom there, looking at upgrading junior high football, junior high boys' basketball uniforms. Just because junior high football wise, we only have one color, so updating it, so we had, I'm looking at a reversible. Just that they would be able to have two colors and newer, and our junior high boys' basketballs have been wearing a reversible practice jersey since, probably for ten years, so just looking at something that we can do a reversible for them as well too, so. Just giving you a heads up, I'm looking at those things, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
On, uh, on district track?
Yes.
Down there on the throwing events, discus, what time of day are those actually getting done, by the way?
Discus?
Like throwing events down on that grassy area where we park for soccer and baseball.
They take forever.
Discus is, is the longest one, it takes forever.
I just, we just scheduled a bunch of baseball games that day. They don't start until six or seven.
Until fourteen?
Yeah. So I was trying to figure out if track is going to be done, if we're.
Track should be done by five, five thirty, I believe.
And, and discus will be.
Just to give you a heads up.
Wait a second, are you going to have the new timer? Discus still takes.
Four thirty.
Discus is done well before the end of the track.
Yeah.
But it is the longest field event, so it's still going on after running events start, but discus will be done by two or three, at the latest.
I forgot about, last time we hosted districts, we got done at five thirty and we had a bomb site come through. I forgot all about that.
Right, for the last race.
It'll be done at a better time.
Hopefully no bomb.
That's fine, we, we'll have, we'll have four or five baseball games going down there.
That'll be good. Okay.
Yeah, but it sounds like we'll be, we won't be able to.
Yep.
Cut across the grass and have discus.
My wife wants me to talk about how I almost got hit by an old lady crossing the street during school hours. Did I tell you this, Dr. Earl?
Yeah.
Yeah, because when we did our little walk-through for state duels.
Yeah.
Walking across the street and I'm looking back at Schumacher, so it's last year. He grabs my shoulder and pulls me back and here comes this little old lady in her car, went right around the barricades, just didn't even stop, just ran me over. I remember on the barricades, it was a good thing there's a gap between me and the kids.
Yeah, so safety of board members is another reason. We need to close that street.
Yeah, my wife's like, you need to tell somebody.
I'll go back to surveillance from last year, I'll see if I can find it.
Then Schumacher, Schumacher pulled me back.
Schumacher saved it, right?
If you find it, can we play it?
You know who this person is.
Yeah.
Around the barricades. All right, thanks, Mr. Schumacher. On the twenty, the rentals report.
Uh, I just wanted to add that the kindergarten field trip is Thursday. I must have put this on our board report long before, I just missed it, I'm sorry about that. But the thing that I wanted to talk about the most was some literacy law updates. So there has been a lot of attention through NDE in the state with helping schools who are not, with reading levels that are not at state standard or state levels. And so Plainview Public Schools applies to that in many ways. So I've been actively involved in Zoom meetings with our service unit in Neely about seeking out support and grant funds to help meet the needs that we have. And just to kind of give you a little back history, our reading curriculum that we current, currently have is on year five. So next year, the Wonders curriculum that we currently contract, our contract will be up with them. The last year and a half, we have spent a lot of time diving into it to see if it is the best fit for us and we have found deficiencies with it. And so we've kind of identified certain areas where we feel we need to be better. So for example, phonics is a skill that we feel is not serving the needs for our students right now with Wonders. That's been a red flag for us for a while now and after doing some research and seeing it in action at Elkhorn Valley, when I took our elementary team there a month ago, they were mesmerized by it. So many teachers are ready to go, okay, we need that, it made a big difference, we've seen the value of it now. And so what I did was included some potential quotes for you in your packet of basic necessities that we're looking at. And my intent is to apply for a grant for both the Hagerty quote that you see, which is basic. I mean, I had a conversation with staff Friday and we talked about other needs beyond these. and we talked about, um, other needs beyond these basic packages, so there is some interest in a couple of other things. But essentially what our staff is looking at is providing those areas of deficiency that we see in our reading curriculum right now, and using this opportunity through all these grants and this literacy requirements as a way to get these through initially grant, but if that doesn't happen, then it could potentially be an expense for the district. Uh, there are several of us schools in the ESU that are pursuing this, so we may tag team and half a dozen of us schools write a grant for new high-quality materials. Um, letters is another thing that we, another resource, a science of reading training that almost all of our classroom teachers have invested in, after next year, they all will be. A lot of school districts are not ahead of it like we are, so that's another opportunity for us to be included in a grant opportunity. We have so few left that it may end up being something that we just pay for it because it really isn't that expensive. But the other major expense that you have in front of you is potentially a new reading curriculum. And we talked pretty, we've talked very religiously about which one has attracted our attention, meets the standards, covers the gaps that we've identified, and CKLA has come up in conversation many times, every time. So the, when we went to Elkhorn Valley, that's why we went there, because they had the phonics component that we felt we needed, and they utilized CKLA. After that visit, it kind of solidified what direction we need to go next. So I sought out, um, different opportunities for that, and one of the proposals you have in front of you includes a pilot, which we are very, we are very consistent with piloting these curriculums first before we commit to them. They offered me an opportunity to pilot all year next year, which would be our last year of Wonders, and we would be required to just buy the teacher materials essentially, and then if we commit to this next year, then they take that fifteen thousand dollar expense off of our initial contract. Teachers are very interested in that. When I brought that to their attention Friday, many said, yes, I would love to pilot it, I would love to dig deeper into it next year and see all the bells and whistles that come with it, because we were very impressed with the eight hours we spent at Elkhorn Valley when we watched it in action. So I'm pursuing these grants first, so I just wanted to propose all that to you, knowing that it's going to be pursued as a grant opportunity first, and if I will find out August eleventh, will be, they're due June second, I will find out August eleventh if we are awarded those grants, and then if we are not awarded those grants, then I might come back to you and say, okay, now this has become an, an expense of ours, are we willing to approach it that way and?
Just so I'm understanding though, if you're not awarded the grants by August eleventh, you'll still be able to pilot it for the next year?
Correct.
But we would be purchasing it, okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. It's a matter of whether or not the state funds these through this literacy laws and all the grants that they're offering to schools, or it becomes a Plainview Public School expense.
And that's fifteen thousand?
The fifteen thousand essentially CKLA, um, the other Hagerty, so the basic package with just the, um, teacher manuals was about two thousand dollars for all of our teachers, and then the professional development was about that much, too. I really want to invest in that part of it, so we are trained and utilize it effectively.
And then be, then be used on top of Wonders?
If, no, yes, correct.
And then, but then you're also looking at replacing Wonders?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the two will be side by side for you?
Yes.
Either way, you want to add, you want the phonics, right?
Yes, that's, that's a need, not a want, but-
Regardless of the-
Correct. Piloting is just the step that we like to do to review a curriculum before we make a one, three, or six-year contract commitment. And teachers are ready to explore and investigate it now rather than waiting until after we get through year six of Wonders.
Would this be covering all elementary grades?
It, it is, so KCKLA is K, I should say preschool, because they do have some stuff for preschool, pre-K five, but we are looking at samples for sixth grade, too.
Phonics would be?
Yep, phonics is included, K six, or pre-K six.
Thank you, Ben, for taking the time and being the advocate for our kids and supporting our goal, our, our goal, all of us in this room of improving those reading scores, and all that takes, it takes time, the grants take time, and I appreciate that you're doing that.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
So you don't have an ask right now?
No, I don't, I'm just kind of giving you a heads up, this is what I'm working on behind the scenes.
Was the, the difference between these, was this a basic, one of, a basic plan and?
The Hagerty one, yes, this-
They both say Hagerty.
Yeah, they both say Hagerty.
Oh, you don't have anything that says CKLA?
Well, it's- I don't have any, it says fifteen thousand.
Uh, it's on the back, on the, it's the back.
Yeah, Hagerty, the one is the materials and the other is the professional development quote.
Okay, so the fifteen nine on that is the professional development.
Yep. Unless I missed it, I left-
That's okay.
I, yeah, I left all the legal, the whole jungle paperwork out there.
Yeah, the CKLA one you may not have in front of you, but it's about fifteen thousand dollars for our teachers to pilot it all year long.
It's, it's here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
That's what it's, that's on the back.
Pilot it together.
Yep.
Then the, the multi-page one, that's the replacement one, there's a portion of the forty-three thousand.
And I just had some numbers to work with when I applied for these grants, so I just kept everything kind of simple and-
Sure.
Thanks for the heads up, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tom, you.
Anything else?
Uh, that's moved on to my report then. I kind of mentioned that Budget Committee is gonna get together with Tobin from Northland? Is it Northland Finance? Northland Finance, the next Tuesday night. We'll have some answers on, you know, how to pay for this potential bond issue. In the April twenty-eighth special meeting, I had a question, do we have like a format for how this is all gonna work?
Yeah.
Are we gonna?
Yeah, I'll have a formal agenda for you, so you will sit as board. Um, on the, just, just inside the, the main doors that you come in, as soon as you come in, into the gym on the left, so I'll have tables angled for you to face the north bleachers, and then also you'll see the, the large score vision. Bob will make his presentation from the center of the gym, somewhere thereabouts, we'll wheel out the scorekeeper, uh, table, and he'll put his, he'll put his laptop on that, and then he'll, uh, he'll walk us through, his laptop will be screen mirrored to score vision, but uh, there'll be a simple agenda that will follow, so we'll have, we'll open the meeting, you'll have roll call, you'll identify the open meetings act, what should be posted in, in the gym. And then, you know, we'll still have some conversation about how will we engage the public? We won't have, generally, public comment is a one-way conversation, just for the public to, to communicate to you, uh, but I'll get a little more direction on how that stakeholder engagement, you know, can look. It's really no problem, you just, okay, it's open, I mean, essentially, it's open enough questions, even though you're in an open meeting, you usually don't do that way. You, you can, there's nothing that says you can't, and that's, you know, the, the right way to probably handle that, but I'll give a little more direction from Tobin, especially Bob, okay, how does this need to operate? I'm going based just on what my experience was when I went to Pierce last August, to see how they engage their public.
Well, just to keep us up to date, once you, or what you're thinking, you know, so we, so we all know what to expect, once we get closer.
Yeah, absolutely.
QR code you were talking about?
Yes.
Is that, we're gonna see that?
Yes.
That's gonna be there at the time of the meeting?
Still, still working on exactly how that, how that might look, uh, and I think when we talk with Tobin, he'll give us an idea about, uh, yes, we, we, some, some, we didn't, they didn't do it at Pierce, uh, but it's a way to get some, some fluid engagement, some immediate feedback uh, from the folks that are present, based upon what you have seen this evening. And so I put together just like six general basic questions that they can capture with their phones, so there'll be a QR code, we'll probably have a hard copy, but also we'll put it up in score vision, so most people probably savvy enough to go ahead and capture that, and then it'll walk them through six simple questions, and, and then it'll immediately go up on score vision, okay, you got ten seconds to answer this question, so we'll see a pie chart up there immediately to just, just to gate, just, if you want to, don't have to, it's just an option, because that can backfire, babe.
It's not gonna be good, it's gonna be bad.
So, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk with, with Tobin about that, uh, and Bob, Bob's experienced schools that have done that. It just gives you like, right away, that first night, that's fresh in everybody's head, and the first question is, based on what you've seen tonight, do you, uh, do you recognize, uh, deficiency in facilities at Plainview Public Schools, yes or no? You know, and then you go into a little, you can, again, this will be your decision on what questions you would, you would want to ask to engage the public immediately, get some immediate feedback. Uh, I talked with Bob today, he says sometimes you make a game time decision, you look and see who showed up, and, you know, because, yeah, you don't, you don't want to get really overwhelmingly bad feedback at your facility audit, public meeting. And he, he said that could be based on other things that are maybe going on in the community, and for sure enough, you know, three dozen, you know, good supporters have, are at a church thing or whatever, I, I don't know. So, uh, that was just a conversation I had with, with Bob today, so still some time to consider if, if, if you want to do that, I think your stakeholders would like it, uh, to be able to provide input, you know, right away, and, and one of the questions is, throughout the course of this process, how do you want to be engaged? How do you want to receive information? Just a variety of ways, whether it's, make sure you get it in the newspaper, make sure you get it out on your social media. We want board members and superintendent to attend, you know, uh, our monthly church meeting for the next few months or so, you know, something. Just any, any way that we can speak directly with our, with our public.
Um, and on that note, Lynn Spotts and I were visiting the other day, and kind of about their school, um, their bond meeting and all of that. And she had some ideas, I think that you would benefit from talking to Dan and Sol, if you need that number, I can give it to you. Uh, he had some good ideas on having a ball with the public more.
I've got a guy in Laurel that was on the committee team that I know, I should probably call him, see how there's one.
Um, it sounds like, I know at least Lynn Spotts are on a subcommittee of the board, or, I'm not exactly sure what it's called, but they're on there with other couples, I think each board member picks someone from the community to help them engage the climate. Lynn Spotts would be a good one, Lynn, to talk to about what role they're playing in that, support for the school. And like I said, I can give you Dan and Sol's number if you need it.
Stand up, Pierce Board President.
Yes.
Yeah, he's been on the board for like sixteen years or something.
Will that be, will that be recorded or streamed?
Um, that, that decision hasn't been made yet on whether there'd be a benefit to do that. We'll definitely record it, um, but whether we live stream it, I mean, that, that, that can be done, probably not with our huddle camera. That's not designed for that.
Well, and it needs to be understood that questions that are asked on the live stream might be missed, we might not see them.
We don't have to, we don't, we don't have to get questions, we just, I place a view on it.
Honestly, I would prefer to have there.
Oh, no, I agree, I agree, I, I-
If you want to ask a question, show up.
Yeah.
Have, you know, put your name on it, you know, show up, walk up to the mic.
I agree with you.
Just like live streaming a basketball game, it, it's good, but it also cuts down on your gate receipts.
So we can, we can record it and then release it later?
A hundred percent record it, I, I would expect that your local media is gonna be there with video and audio recording.
Okay.
I, I do this just for our purpose, so we have our meetings captured, um, audibly.
Okay, well, yeah, just keep us up to date with, for sure, those things, because we need to go in the next two weeks here, so.
Mm-hmm.
Good. All right, Superintendent, your report.
Okay, I, I don't anticipate needing to add to our days that we've had emergency dismissals. Uh, so this amounts to about twenty-two hours of instruction missed due to, uh, emergency closure. Uh, that's about average over the past ten years, uh, to, to be honest with you. Uh, then I've got listed school, school shooter training, that really should be the school threat training, it's one of the things that I learned is if somebody doesn't need to have a firearm, uh, to be a threat, uh, to your school, so they, how they use the word threat as opposed to shooter. Uh, and, and so I spent, uh, the morning on Thursday, uh, here in Plainview, the morning on Friday at Northeast Community College, uh, on this topic. On Thursday, it was about our, our local, regional, and statewide response to a threat at Plainview Public Schools. Uh, it, it was a terrific morning meeting where we just essentially scratched the surface, but you had a lot of good, half the people I did not know, and it was just a superintendent of the school district, to have people that I didn't know show up to talk about keeping our school district and our students safe. Uh, I was just really impressed, uh, that was headed up by, uh, the health, bodyguard of the health department out of O'Neill, and she brought together a terrific group of stakeholders whose purpose is to, whether it's law enforcement, uh, fire, emergency response, uh, just the, the coordination of if we have that threat, so it's after the fact, it's happened, uh, and what would the response be? So we've got more conversations to continue to happen, but it was just good to hear those folks at that level dialogue about, um, okay, here's how we'll respond, and so engaged Kyle and I quite a bit in, what do we already have in place for, uh, if we have an active threat in the building, what are our protocols? Uh, if we need to evacuate the building, what are our protocols, reunification with families, uh, so quite a bit. Melissa was there, and so Melissa, I know you probably can or should comment, you know, as well, your takeaways.
Um, so there was about thirty people there, um, state patrol investigators, county officers, the local law enforcement here in town, uh, Chief Halick and Officer Funston were there, EMTs, uh, the fire department. She did mention I was the only school board member that had ever been at one of her meetings, which really shocked me. Uh, both of our administrators were there, lots of great conversation, there was a lot of times where she had to stop us and say, okay, we have to get back to this, we only have until noon. A lot of great, great conversation, I think it was very eye-opening for everyone in the room, and how uh, any tragic event, or even any natural disaster, we need to have better plans. Uh, if something would happen, we need to plan, we all need to be on the same page, because we all love our children and this school, we all love this school, and we love our community, and there's just so many great people. It was very, very inspiring, and in light of it being a conversation about something tragic happening. I was very thankful to be a part of the conversation.
Yeah, well, thanks again for going.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, a couple of times we said we're talking about the school and this and that and the other thing, and people that hadn't been in the school, of course, you guys come and walk through the school whenever you want, ideally in the evening or the weekend when the school's not full of kids, you know, so they can be kind of familiar with our layout, which is not an, uh, easy, simple layout, but uh, the chief has a pop, uh, she's like, yeah, I gotta get up there more often, and, and primarily also to interact with the kids, her and Officer Funston, you know, get to know the kids, faces, names, uh, and just to be seen, I'd love to have her, be part of her routine, her and Officer Funston, the start of our school day. That's, that's the peak time for a potential school, uh, threat to your school, and the number one deterrent is when, uh, that perpetrator sees a law enforcement vehicle parked at the school. Now, we don't have an SRO, uh, school resource officer, um, you know, so you're, and it's kind of like Plainview, your SRO is your local law enforcement, your Chief Halick, and Chief, and Officer Funston, they are quite visible here, to be honest, whether it's during school day or school activities. So we're, we're really pretty fortunate, but I would see a collect, that, that same group, or most of them, uh, that our next training, our next gathering will be here, and we'll be on-site, and, okay, we're here, and the, and some what-if scenarios and so on, and we can what-if forever and ever and ever in your training, but so it, it was very good, um, and then the next day, the training was more on trying to prevent identifying those, uh, who fit the profile, identifying students who fit the profile, and then a lot of, well, you know, what are the characteristics, the levels of characteristics of the, the profile, of the stereotype of, of those that want to do harm in a school? It was a pretty rough morning, I mean, it, it was disturbing, a, a lot of, as Phil Chalmers has, has interviewed, uh, hundreds of not just school shooters, but, but, uh, serial killers and, uh, you know, Charles Manson's in the world. He has interviewed along with the, the school shooters that you've heard about over the past twenty years, just to try to figure out what makes them tick and identify who these kids are. Fatherlessness is the number one characteristic of a school shooter, fatherlessness. Uh, way ahead of bullying, because that's always the first thing that the media says, and that the school shooters' parents and family say, he was bullied. They drove him to it. Now, I'm not saying, I, I don't want to diminish that, that's a factor, but well above that is, uh, engaging in hours and hours and hours of violent video games. You know, so, uh, it, there was this whole list, and so it was, it, it was quite revealing, you know, so, and I mean, that was very good, too, sad and disturbing and, and irritated- Sad and disturbing and, and irritating, frustrating. But one of my top takeaways was this School Guard app, which I'm gonna bring to our staff. And if I can indulge you for just a few minutes of watching this video, this is an app that we're all gonna put on our phone. It comes at an expense of $1,000 and then $99 a month. $1,000, one time, $99 a month. Because the, the response time, minimizing the response time is what saves lives. Okay, so if you can get folks there in 60 seconds, difference between 60 seconds and two minutes, uh, it could be a dozen lives. So the response time, once that school shooter or that threat enters your building, the response time to neutralize that person, this, uh, helps minimize that. So I just wanna share this piece with you.
Welcome to Guard 911, the smartphone app that places a panic button in the hands of all approved staff members for when seconds save lives. The following tutorial will show you the ease of reporting a non-life threatening intraproperty incident and a life threatening armed intruder or active shooting emergency. Also, we will illustrate the use of the other daily features the app offers. For illustration purposes, we will use the School Guard app. But please know, the Guard 911 and Campus Guard 911 apps work the same way. To begin, use your compatible smartphone and/or iPad and go to your respective app store to download the appropriate app assigned to your property. After it successfully downloads and installs, enter the unique one-time-only activation code and username provided by your site administrator or gatekeeper listed on the instruction sheet you received. After you enter your activation code and accept the terms of use, your School Guard app is now live. Please note, the app only works while on or nearby school property. But you should always safeguard your phone to help prevent inadvertent activations like any alert or 911 calling system. Please read all the helpful hints on the instruction sheet and safely discard it once you are finished. It is recommended that you place the School Guard icon on the main page so it is easily located in an emergency. It is also recommended that you turn your phone's passcode feature on. It prevents students or others from accessing your device and triggering a false alarm. Let's start on the main screen of the School Guard app. You will notice three key red buttons and three smaller white buttons at the bottom. The main feature of School Guard is the large red button shaped like a shield in the center of your screen. This is the report armed intruder panic button for life threatening emergencies and should only be used in this case. Once pressed, you will need to slide the bar to the right and press yes to confirm this is a true emergency. Once activated, this button will do four things simultaneously. First, it will speed dial 911. When answered, you can speak to the 911 operator and report the armed intruder or active shooting emergency. While waiting to speak with the 911 operator to report the emergency, the app alerts all other School Guard users at your location and any adequate cell phone or data signal. It will also provide them with a map location of the initial alert or situational awareness. The School Guard app will also alert all other Guard 911 protected properties within a five mile radius. Most importantly, the app will alert all law enforcement officers on and off duty from all jurisdictions or in close proximity to your location for an expedited notification and subsequent response. Next, let's take a look at the red 911 only button at the bottom left. This button simply speed dials 911 and can be used in non-active shooting emergencies. Once pressed, you'll be prompted yes or no to prevent any inadvertent activations. If you're using an iPad, there will not be a 911 button displayed since there is no cellular phone access on these devices. Now, look at the right side of your smartphone screen. You'll see it teach your assist button. Assistance requested. Assistance requested. You would use this button in situations such as a fight or instant where you are needing assistance from other school staff members. Once pressed, you'll be prompted yes or no. This button sends out an assistance requested audible alert to all other School Guard users tied to your school. This feature will not alert other protected locations nor the police. After the request for assistance is sent, a box will appear for you to type in an optional message, such as fight in gym or send nurse to room 100. Unlimited messages can be typed and sent as the situation unfolds. Any inadequate cell phone or data signal, the recipients of the feature assist will see your name in the alert as well as a map location of where the alert was sent. Next, we will review the three white buttons at the bottom of your screen. These features are the principal push, response plan and view alert buttons. The view alert button only displays during an emergency activation.
Those are the primary features that I wanted to share with you. So, so for example, notification of our campus, if somebody comes in the principal doors right here to threaten our student body. Tammy's supposed to keep her cool and make an all-call announcement right there with all those windows. And maybe somebody with a weapon or of sorts. This, this provides an opportunity for anybody to notify everybody in the school immediately that we've got an armed intruder, okay? And the shield, which is only used for that purpose, our local law enforcement is actually notified before 911 is, is even notified. And so they, their, their app is called the Hero 911 and it's attached to this. So local law enforcement are very familiar with this. Schools aren't, you know, as much. And this is what I picked up on Thursday. Uh, the, the state patrolman I was sitting next to, I didn't know, said, Dr. Alt, do you guys have School Guard? No, I don't, tell me about it. He says, well, and he showed it to me. And so I contacted the guy and had a little tutorial the day. So this is a minimal investment that will help minimize the time between armed intruder in the building and, uh, and law enforcement response. So, um, so we'll be introducing our, our staff to this app.
So do staff keep their phones on them all the time?
They, they're, uh, they might not be on them, uh, but...
They can't use it if they don't have their phone on them?
Uh, so it'll, they now can't keep it on silent. And that's gonna be the only issue, because now we want, we don't want their phone buzzing or ringing while it's in their desk. Some may have their phone on them. I don't know, we don't hold them. Uh, we, we, we prefer that they really be put in their purse or in their desk, put away. This will require them to not have them on silent. And so, you know, that, that, I think that's worth having to deal with. You know, the teacher's phone buzzes and the kids can hear it. I think that, that's okay. We're gonna trade that off for being able to have this notification, uh, to keep the campus safe.
Yeah, I like your idea, but I'm skeptical on it. I mean, it's, I think it's more fear. I mean, I understand that, you know, it's an issue, potential issue that you'll be, you never have to use. But, you know, they're using a lot of fear to get you to wanna use it. Uh, one that, you know, you have to have your phone on you. Now, I understand, like you mentioned, that she can't do like all-page call. But as what we learned is they can program a button in that phone. So she doesn't have to say anything. She can just hit a button on her phone right in front of her and it can automatically send some now. They can program stuff like that in. Versus now she has to go grab her phone, cell phone, which may be in her purse and do that call versus that.
And, and, and it wouldn't just be her that could alert, it's anybody. It would be anybody, anybody that would, uh, you know, be the, the first to recognize that there's a potential threat. So, and I guess, you know, notifying the people on campus is one thing, but also notifying, uh, local law enforcement uh, is the other feature, you know, that we wouldn't have through our, our new phone system, which does allow us to have, you know, blanket notification, which we, which we don't have now. You know, so...
That game program. Yeah, I don't, I just...
Yeah, I get it, there, there is a...
Those apps, they'll be on your phone you won't use and they'll just automatically offload? Cause I hear that happen, your phone will just like, oh, you don't use it, so it just puts it there. You have to download it again if you wanna use it with the icons there.
I, I would guess, and I don't, I don't know this well enough to know Justin yet, whether they, uh, they've got a, a routine refresher for that very purpose. They, they wouldn't, they, cause they would know the chances are minimal that you're gonna use this, right? So it would sit dormant, yes, on your, on your iPhone, hopefully, right? Uh, but sure enough, three, four, 10 years down the road, you do have a threat. Uh, is it gonna be active when you haven't used it in 10, you know? So that, that would be, so I'll, I'll bring this back to you, uh, once I, you know, receive some more education.
I also think it's important to mention at this meeting the other day, it's, um, it's very important that we have a good relationship with our local police. This is something that would make this group feel a lot better.
We have a good relationship with them. I mean, I'll, I'll think getting, I'll think getting an app's gonna make our relationship better.
I think so. I, so I disagree with you on that. We have to make sure that we're all on the loop at all times. It's just part of the discussion the other day of a step in the direction that we all want to take.
So they, they might discuss this at your meeting the other day, but something I've, I've kinda worried or wondered about before is, I've come across a couple of accidents before and I called 911 to report it. And I got, I think one time I got Norfolk dispatch. I was just south of town. Um, another time I maybe got Wayne and I was closer to multiple towns. If, if you were to call from a cell phone, 911, I mean, I don't know how that works. Am I gonna get to Norfolk? Yeah, or wherever. And then they got a call, Plainview or whoever?
I think they're getting better at that though, because I accidentally hit the button on my phone to call 911 and I was at my mom's house, which is like right on the Pierce County, Anil County line. And mine went to Leeley, cause it's on Anil County.
Okay.
So it's, it must be getting pretty close. I was within like a quarter mile of being in Anil County on that accident.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of...
About just a year ago or so.
Um, I was down in Pierce, Leeley. I was on that Tilden Road last summer, just at that intersection of Pierce, Leeley. I think that one went to Norfolk. Yeah. So that, that was something I wondered if, if, uh, this would alleviate that, you know, if it gets to the right place?
Well, once 911 is, once it's routed to whoever can answer the phone. Because, uh, right, when we have a, a threat and it becomes, starts to become public, uh, 911's gonna get inundated with our local, uh, folks, families, you know, whoever. So, cause I asked that question, I said, are they gonna get a busy signal? I said, no, it's always routed to the next available. Uh, and so I did, went to 911 in Columbus. They're able to almost simultaneously respond back to, uh, to, you know, local EMS. Uh, but, you know, I'm not, you know, completely privy to how they operate, to how they route their calls and support, but...
Well, I mean, you're talking about 60 seconds versus two minutes. Do you go through that process versus this would go straight to like Christie's phone?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So it doesn't go to 911? If you hit that, it'll go to 911 wherever, but it also goes Christie's phone and Andrew's phone and county and state patrol.
Yep, it goes to everyone and the state patrols that are closed would have this one.
Yeah, it would seem like it would get there a lot quicker.
The only thing I don't like about it is having to have your phone on loud all the time because I feel like we're policing our kids not to have their phone.
Don't your like emergency alerts come through when you're in library? Why wouldn't this app do that same thing?
Yeah, I agree.
I would think this app would have...
I know, I have a couple of questions I already have for my friend Tim, who I met today.
But I, I like the fact that anybody in the school could, can, you know, if you're, say you're a second floor up in the junior high and you see somebody coming across the park, you know, it looks as...
More likely that we might use it for internal issues, you know, if we've got a health emergency. Uh, and, you know, it's just, uh, alert, uh, alert the office, you know. And again, you know, we're, we're gonna have better capabilities here in, uh, next fall with our phone intercom system, but, um...
So I think that was one of the upgrades. I mean, if we spend money on this or we could potentially, there's an upgrade to our phone system we could use. So we could maybe get a lot of the same services.
So one of the topics of discussion was if someone came in and fired around into Tammy's office and whatever happened there.
Yeah.
It probably would not be heard in the 1920s building.
What do you mean, the gunshot?
The gunshot.
Well, what's that to do with the cell phone?
How do you alert everybody?
You push a button on the phone.
Who does that? Whose responsibility is that?
Whoever's on their phone.
Yeah. It, it just would provide another layer, you know, I guess. But, uh, these, our new phones from Grant do have a feature, uh, an emergency feature, one push button emergency feature.
Somebody said they could program it or, or as an addition or something.
It's based on the law for somebody that, yeah, uh, at, at any rate. So it would just be another layer of protection and service, not just for, uh, active threat, but also for, um, office notification, medical emergency or fight in the gym, you know, need support. So, uh, I'll share more information. Just want you to, that, that was a takeaway I got from the law enforcement, uh, that I was sitting next to. Considering a van or bus purchase, uh, we do have, uh, funds budgeted for that. And I'm gonna ask the transportation committee, which is Mr. Alexander, Mr. From, Mr. Rasmussen, to have a committee meeting within the next month, not in the next week. But, and, and I've been pushing some information to Bob on, are we looking at a, a full bus, short bus, van, diesel, uh, van? Uh, again, we've got some potential transportation changes that will, uh, help us maybe, uh, with some, uh, van purchase. But, um, you know, I, I certainly need your help making that decision with Mr. McCabe, um, probably into June. But just giving you a heads up on that.
Just talking one vehicle right now?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, you know, whether it's a, a route bus, which we don't need a full bus for route, route bus, activity bus or van. And that would be a short, a short bus. I'm kinda interested in these gas parked short buses right now because you don't need a higher level of CDL to drive them. And when they break down, they don't cost a minimum of $5,000. And gas doesn't break down as easy as diesel. It's been my experience, you guys would know a whole lot better than me.
We've got some buses we've been...
We do. Our best bus right now is a 1989, uh, with just all manual, everything, just dirt, a lot of dirt, but...
That's the key, pre-conditioned.
It's solid.
Like the one that the windows won't roll up?
There's no rolling.
I mean, they won't go up all the way.
It has air conditioning.
Out to Calaway and it was like negative 30 and the kids were freezing.
Now, that wasn't the one you took, but yeah.
Well, whichever one it was.
This one is just a dependable, reliable one that just...
They were miserable.
They were miserable.
Keeps going, yeah. A little spoiled now for activities with regard to the bus, but...
Yeah.
The race was...
Okay, that, that's all I have. Uh, thank you, that was plenty.
Okay, well, I think we can come to the end. All the way.
There. There. Thank you.